Also, meeting for Troy. It's March 17th. And please stand as Pastor A.C. Phipps from Evans Wood Church of God.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you've given to us. We thank you for Troy, Michigan. We ask that you would guide, that you would direct, that you would bless, that you would give wisdom to these leaders here, to this council. We pray this in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City council meeting is in session. Roll call, Ms. Bittner.
Mayor Slater. Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderek.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes. Here.
And...
Mayor, resolve that Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Mayor Slater at this regular city council meeting of March 17th, 2014, due to being out of the county.
Support. And resolution offered by Councilman Fleming, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Henderson.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Item C1, like to have Cindy Stewart come forward on behalf of the city employees and talk about Casual for a Cause.
Gives me great pleasure today. We have a check. Employees raised money during the months of September and October for the Comans, Susan B. Coleman, and we raised $845. And this is Mo Keenan. She's going to tell you a little bit about what the money's going to go for.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for including us in this meeting and mostly for what people did to raise the money. The Susan G. Coleman Detroit Race for the Cure will take place on June 7th, this year at Shane Park. Thirty to 40,000 people of our friends and neighbors will come out and help end breast cancer forever. In the 23 years that we've been doing this in Metro Detroit, we've raised and invested $25 million in the fight against breast cancer. $800 at a time, and more often $5 and $10 at a time. We hope we'll see you all at the race. To let you know quickly what we do with the money, 75% of our net proceeds go to local, and that's Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb County programs that help people who are in most need, they have few resources, and perhaps nowhere else to turn. 25% goes to research, and the rest of us allows us, the rest of it allows us to provide help and support and patient navigation and public policy advocacy the rest of the year. So, we thank you tremendously. One in eight women will get breast cancer in her life. Probably every one of you knows someone who has been touched by it, and this will truly make a difference to our friends, our neighbors, and through research, people around the world. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item C2 is a proclamation to Keith Stark of Stark Reagan and Cindy Stewart, if you want to come back. Did you want to come and introduce that, or just?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Keith Stark. I'm the managing partner of Stark Reagan. Peter Arvant, Ken Boyer, two of my partners.
Why don't you guys go around? He's going to read a proclamation first.
Proclamation to you as well. I'll just read a little bit of this. It's a proclamation celebrating 40 years in the city of Troy for Stark Reagan, PC. Whereas Stark Reagan, PC, has been a proud member of the Troy community since 1973, making it Troy's oldest continuously running law firm. The founders are Bill Reagan, retired and living in Tennessee, and Harry Stark, who passed away four years ago. Harry practiced well into his late 80s, and his son Keith is the managing partner. And whereas Stark Reagan, PC specializes in helping communities or companies by providing expert business and tax advice, as well as helping families with their estate planning needs. And whereas from their original offices on Big Beaver Road to their current home at 1111 West Long Lake Road, Stark Reagan has witnessed Troy's growth from a largely rural community into one of the, one that is the hub for some of Michigan's and even America's largest companies. And whereas all along Stark Reagan has woven itself into the fabric of Troy, not only through many of its employees living here, but by actively supporting the Troy Rotary, Chamber of Commerce, Kiwanis, and Troy School District. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy hereby congratulate Stark Reagan on its 40th anniversary and recognizes their impact upon our community as they serve as a steadfast and dedicated business in the city of Troy. Be it further resolved that the mayor, city council, and city management join the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of the 40th anniversary of Stark Reagan in the city of Troy, that the community that they want to call home for another 40 years, presented this 17th day of March, 2014, by myself and all members of council.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to say a few words. Congratulations.
And before you go, too, we, the city manager got together with us. We know Pete from way back, and he's been a hard worker with the chamber.
This is just the old token of our appreciation for all you've done with the chamber and...
Wonderful, a wonderful commemoration of our golfing experience together and also Brian's near-death experience with a bee. Very, very happy that you're calling your day's over, especially you, Brian. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, thank you very much. We do appreciate it. A lot, we've seen a lot happen since we were down the road in Big Beaver 40 years ago, and it's all been good, and we're looking forward to as many more years here as we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take that to the chamber meeting tomorrow.
All right. Item C3, presentation of the state champion DPW water tapping team, introduced by Tim Ryschnack.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council. It's always a pleasure to come up and recognize our public works staff for the things they do. This group of guys have come in many times early in the morning to practice. What they did is went to the state conference where there's a lot of training opportunities. They entered into the water tapping contest and were very, very efficient. I'll let them get into the details of how long it took them, but the key importance here is that they, they work hard at it, they take an opportunity, they do training, they're going to get a free trip to Boston, an opportunity to get some national exposure to some training opportunities that they don't have the opportunity here in Michigan. And I'd like to introduce the group of folks. Rick Schepler is the superintendent of Streets, or Water and Sewer, and I want to bring up the tapping team themselves, along with, we have a meter competition where they put a water meter together, and you're going to see that tonight, and that individual is here who placed second. And then we're going to bring up the department supervisor, Mike Schlegelmann. Come on up, guys. Mike Schlegelmann is, as I said, the department supervisor, and he also is on here. Why don't you guys come around and get behind, and then we'll have Dave come down here in a second. Mike Schlegelmann is also part of the State Committee for Water Tapping. He's getting involved in the, in the state activities of American Water Works Association. And I'm going to go around, and Rick Greenwell was our contestant for putting water meters together, and I know he's going to work hard this year to move to first place, but that second place finish, we're very proud of him for. We've got Rich Wildes, Mark McCollum, Scott Carruthers. They're the team themselves, and Coach Andy Willis. You guys switch on this? I'm sorry about that. They switch. Anyway, this is the group. I'll have Dave come down, and then I'd like Rick to give a little bit of a, or talk about what you're going to see on this video after we watch the video. Go ahead and play it. Yes. This, this will be the putting the water meter together. Meter madness.
Ready. Okay, here we go. One, two, three, go! Steady. There, steady. Forty-one point one-two seconds.
And they do test that meter to make sure it doesn't leak after. They get penalty points if it leaks. This is the overhead shot of the same, same thing. But, and they throw in extra parts in a bucket, so. There's always a few extra parts, just to mess up. What'd you miss by, Rick? Like five seconds?
It was five seconds.
Five seconds, yeah.
Nice.
The second video here will be the tapping team, which they, this is much easier than it is really in the field. In the field, they go six feet down in the, in the sloppy mud and...
Some noise, guys, for the city of Troy, as they make their second attempt at today's tapping contest.
Andy, the setup man here on the left side of the water main. Richie is the coach on the, on the side. Scott Carruthers is the cranker, and way on the right is Mark McCollum, the copper man. So, what they do is tap the main here. You'll see how hard it is to tap the main. You'll probably hear some crunches as the bit goes through the water main. This is a live water main, full water. On the right, you see Mark, he's, he's flaring the copper. They have to cut it off and flare it, put the fittings on.
Come on, Scott!
There, you can hear the crack of that water. Taking that tap out and putting, and they're going to put in the corporation. Their practice time is like 6:00 a.m. in the morning, so it's kind of rough, first thing in the morning, to do this. Putting the copper together, spin it on, and this same thing, leaks, you get penalty minutes for. Seconds. That simulates a curb box in the middle there with a meter set on the far right. Turn the water on, same thing. If there's any leaks, penalized. And their winning time was one minute and 34 seconds, 30 seconds, one minute and 30 seconds. So, great time.
Congratulations to y'all. Asked Mayor Pro Tem to come down because I know that the Dane and Dave Show is going to come to the public works, and we're going to try to get Dane and Dave to participate in tapping a water main here.
Six feet in the ground.
And Wade Fleming just volunteered also.
My former life, I was a mechanic, so I know what it takes to do some of that stuff. Pretty incredible. Item D, carryover items, there are none. Public hearings, like to introduce the Assistant City Attorney to go over some liquor violations.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. It's kind of hard to file, file that exciting presentation, but business as usual here. Just as a preliminary matter, we have two items up tonight for violation hearings. We had some last meeting. This is the time of year when we are allowed to make recommendations to the Liquor Control Commission in Lansing, if we feel that in fact anybody has violated the law to the point where we don't think they should be entitled to a renewal of their license as of May 1st, the time at which all licenses are renewed by the state of Michigan. The two persons here tonight have stipulated to the fact that there was a decoy and they violated the, the compliance test. So, there will not be any hearings. We, we set these as public hearings so that if the members of the public wish to say anything, or if they wish to contest it, they are allowed to do so. So, that having been said, moving to item E1. The first matter is Yara, Inc., doing business as Lebanese Grill. They're located at 1600 Rochester Road. In this particular instance, there was a sale to a minor, person under the age of 21, on March 20th of 2013. At that time, our decoy went in, took a seat at a table. The waitress took an order for beer. She did not ask for ID and brought the beer to the decoy. She was ticketed, she pled guilty at our district court and paid a fine of $100. The liquor, Michigan Liquor Control Commission had a hearing, and they were fined $650. They did not contest the decoy sting at that point either. This is the first report of, or excuse me, the first reported compliance test under our records is October 19th, 2000. During that, since that time, there have been 29 compliance tests for sales to minors, and Lebanese Grill has passed 27 of those tests. The two violations were on July 19th, 2010, and this one on March 29th of 2000, excuse me, March 20th of 2013. Since that time, they have passed two more compliance tests on November the 5th, 2013, and one that I don't think is listed on your list from March 1st of this year. There was one charge, not by our local police, to my knowledge, but by the Liquor Control Commission for furnishing alcohol for illegal purposes and permitting loud conduct on March 29th of '09, and the Michigan Liquor Control Commission fined them $300. There have been 58 liquor inspections since October 19th of 2000, and they have passed them all. Tonight, I have spoken with Gus Sharif, who is here for Yara Incorporated, and if the council has any questions for myself, I'll be happy to answer them. I do want to introduce tonight, and I forgot to last week, and I apologize for that, Jeff Obersky, who is our contact in the police department and does all the investigations. He assists our department in looking at renewals for licensing. He does all the background checks, and he's very valuable to us in putting together the information for councils. So, do want to let you know he's here tonight and was here last week. But if there are any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, I think Mr. Sharif wishes to address you.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Mr. Mayor, councilmen, like everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand here in front of you today and explain like my situation. I had just hired a young waitress at that time, and we gave her all the training possible within the facility, you know, to ask and check IDs and all that. That night in particular, I had just stepped out to grab a few things, and I got called, like, you know, that, that's what happened. She served like an undercover, and, you know, obviously she learned her lesson, and the reason why I hired her again was, you know, she came in like, you know, explaining and crying out that her father is suffering cancer, her mother is working full-time, she's going to school, like, you know, she's trying to support herself. So, feeling bad, you know, I hired her, we gave her like all the training possible, and, you know, she, obviously, you know, she, you know, violated like, you know, the rules of our facility and our, our organization, because like we have posters all over the place and, you know, to ID everyone, like regardless of their looking, their age, you know, their color, you know, regardless, like, you know, they're required to ID everyone. And as Sue mentioned, like, you know, we've passed like all the, the previous incident or the checkups, and, and we, we never had any problem, and we tried to comply with all the city requirements and all the city ordinances, so, and I'm asking you tonight, like, you know, to forgive us, like, and what we did now, like, you know, I updated my computer system, my POS system, so now the waitstaff are not allowed to grab anything before, like, you know, they check the ID, and they have to swipe the driver's license of the customer on the computer for them to enter any order to the computer. So, I'm asking you all to forgive us for that, like...
Go ahead. More?
It was, it was an unintentional accident, so.
Council, have any questions?
What has happened to the young lady who was working for you?
She, unfortunately, she's still there, so. I'm not going to lie about it, like, you know, she, she came out crying and like, you know, please, like, forgive me, this and that. I mean, that, you know, the easiest thing to, you know, is to fire her, but like, you know, this is not going to help either way. So, what I did, like, we do have booklets, like, you know, about serve-safe alcohol, so she had to read the whole thing, and, you know, I offered her like, you know, a few questions, and, you know, she, she passed them all. And recently, you know, we were, you know, we're all serve-safe or TIPS certified, but now we're like, you know, in the process of renewing, like, you know, all those certificates. I contacted Troy Coalition, Nancy Morrison, and she referred me to someone, you know, like, who offers like, you know, those classes or those training, and like, you know, very soon, we're going to get her, like, you know, at our location or at our facility, and like, you know, everyone has to go through the TIPS training and certification.
Councilman Fleming?
Yes, sir. Would you consider doing your own decoy program? Have you ever done that? Or would you consider doing that where, rather than wait for the police to come in with an underage person, you could do your own?
I do.
Decoy. And you do that?
I do.
How has that worked for you?
It works like, I mean, we have a great waitstaff, and they're all responsible. We, you know, we, we're very conscious, like, about the hiring and, you know, like who to bring in, like, you know, to work with us. We're like family-oriented, you know, we've been in Troy like since '99, so. So, we, we, like, you know, I, I know, like, that $3.50 beer is not going to get us rich. You know, if anything, it's going to break our, our account, so. So, we try to avoid those incidents as much as possible. But, you know, when you, when you have someone irresponsible, young, and, you know, you try to give them the training, like, you know, you can, but like, you know, if they're going to make the mistake, you know, they're not, you know, it's hard to monitor, like, you know, like those little things. We try our, you know, I'm, I'm there most of the time, but, you know, I was just like, no, that's like 10 minutes that I had stepped out.
Councilman Pennington?
Now, you said that all your employees had, have received the training, but I read their police report. At the time, this waitress that served this drink and got caught, she had not. Is that correct?
No, not that one.
Okay.
She had just been hired.
Okay. How many other employees had not been trained?
Well, now, the, the recent ones, like, they're not trained, they're not certified. They're trained, but they're not certified.
Okay. They've been, they've had the TIPS training?
Yeah. While we do our own training, like, you know, like I said, like, you know, I have my own booklet inside, like, you know, the facility. So, anybody before, like, they go on the floor and they start serving, they're required, like, you know, to pass questions, like, you know, that are inside that booklet. And that booklet, like, we had passed, like, you know, a serve-safe certificate test, like, you know, with the Michigan, Michigan Restaurant Association, and we were, that's how we got certified, you know, through.
Okay. But this girl hadn't been trained before she was serving alcohol, is what I'm getting at. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to open the public hearing and see if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak on this.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Morrison. I'm the executive director of the Troy Community Coalition, and Mr. Sharif did call my office on Friday. I have put him in contact with our TIPS representative, and our TIPS representative did inform me that she would be contacting him soon. He informed me that he wanted to train five to six of his employees for the TIPS certification. And then I am also here if there is anybody else in the audience that needs assistance with preventing any liquor violations. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this? I'd like to close the public hearing. Someone like to forward a resolution? Someone like to forward a resolution?
Here.
Counselman Fleming?
Yes, Mayor, I'll move the resolution as printed E1.
Second. Forwarded by Counselman Fleming, seconded by Counselman Pennington. Comment?
Here. Just to clarify a thing, that does recommend renewal of the on-premises liquor license, with stipulation that all your employees receive this training and the police department be notified, so that's all in the resolution there.
Any other comment? Vote, Ms. Bittner?
Counselmember Campbell?
Yes.
Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Counselmember Hodrick?
Yes.
Counselmember Pennington?
Yes.
Counselmember Teetz?
Yes.
Item E2.
Again, Mayor Protem and council members, this is Pizza Populous of Troy doing business as Pizza Populous Rio Wraps. In this particular situation, there was a sale to a minor on March 20th, 2013. The minor was, of course, under the age of 21 years old. The young lady sat down at a booth in Margarita. The waitress did not ask for ID and brought the drink to her. A ticket was issued to the waitress. She pled guilty, excuse me, responsible, and paid the fine of $135. The Michigan Liquor Control Commission had a hearing. The party stipulated to the fact that they did violate the liquor law, and there was a $400 fine assessed. This business opened November the 1st of 2008. There have been 13 compliance tests. This is the first offense. There have been two more since March 20th of last year. They have passed both the November 4th, 2013, and one this year on March 1st, 2014. There have been 29 liquor inspections, and they have passed them all. The person who is representing Pizza Populous of Troy is George Kresik, who is here to speak to the board, unless the board has any questions for me. Mr. Kresik?
Good evening, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council members. This unfortunately is our first violation in over 25 years of operations at our restaurants. We operate five establishments that currently sell alcohol. We have four in Michigan and one in Ohio, and again, this is our first violation. We take the serving of alcohol very seriously. This particular situation occurred, there's no disputing that, it should not have occurred. Subsequent to that violation, we had all of our servers, bartenders, and managers at all of our locations TIPS-certified. We have a TIPS-certified trainer on staff that conducts classes. At that point, we went through and had all of our employees that deal with alcohol TIPS-certified. Subsequent to that, we have on a regular basis an ongoing program of TIPS certification for new hires and other individuals that are hired to come on board, either in a management capacity, server, or possibly bartender. In addition to the, you know, TIPS-certified classes that we have, we also have an ongoing training program. All of our managers, bartenders, servers are required to ask for ID and check ID anytime alcohol is being served. It's standard policy. There's no exceptions at any of our restaurants. As indicated, in addition to the TIPS certification program that we run in-house, we also have server manuals, bartender manuals, and a rigid upfront training program prior to the time that the server or bartender ever has an interaction with the customer by themselves. There's typically a training period that would run anywhere from several days to a week, possibly even as long as two weeks, where they work hand-in-hand with a certified employee going through the training process. And at no point in time do we have that individual start working with the customer until we feel very confident that they're capable of handling that position at that time.
Council, have any questions? Counselman Fleming?
Thank you for that detail. What was the breakdown in the system on this occasion? Because it seems that you're doing your due diligence, you're doing everything you can. What was the breakdown and what transpired with the employee? Are they still with you, or?
Normal circumstances, the employee would have been terminated. This particular set of circumstances, this individual had two deaths within the previous two weeks, and prior to that time, she had been an exemplary employee, no issues, no violations. And due to that extenuating circumstance, we suspended her without pay for a week, and again, brought her back, recertified her with the other individuals. And again, had it not been for those extenuating circumstances, she would have been terminated.
Any other questions? Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
And if there are any questions from the audience on this item?
Exactly. What is the policy? Is it consistent in the city itself? I mean, do all the proprietors know what the city, is it the same for everybody, or is it kind of, is there a certain that they know that they have to do? That's all I want to know about that.
Mayor Protem and council members, while we have an ongoing sting operation at all times, every single person that serves alcohol in the city gives compliant test. We are consistent with how many we give every year. They vary from time to time. Of course, we do not tell anybody we're coming in and what time. That would destroy the whole effect of the decoy, but it's across the board. And so we believe our policy is fair and consistent, and I think that answers the question. I'm not sure if there's anything else the council has to ask me.
Yeah, I had one more question. This gentleman here, after the violation, he had all of his staff and waitstaff and managers go through the training, and the gentleman before, Mr. Sharif, stated that he was only gonna have five or six of his waitstaff go through the TIPS training. It seems to me that after every violation, we have mandated that everyone go through that training. What would be different about, do we need to contact Mr. Sharif on that, or?
Um, all, the resolution that you passed says that all serving employees must complete a service training. What will happen after tonight, if the resolution, if this resolution also passes, is Mr. Obersky will send a certified resolution to everyone that's been here. They will be told to provide Jeff with proof that every employee that's serving has been trained, and we will verify that. That's, Jeff's very good about that. We've had pretty good compliance in the past. Everybody realizes the seriousness of it. So we do follow up after the council hearings, and we make sure that we get the necessary paperwork to show that they were adequately trained, and that's all serving employees.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No other questions? I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this back to the council table. Would anyone like to forward that? Counselman Campbell?
I'll forward the motion as written for a positive answer, positive vote.
Second. Forwarded by Counselman Campbell, seconded by Counselman Pennington. Any questions? Council comments? Vote, please.
Counselmember, excuse me, Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Counselmember Hodrick?
Yes.
Counselmember Pennington?
Yes.
Counselmember Teetz?
Yes.
Counselmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item E3 is a public hearing to receive public input of the City of Royal Oak Hospital Finance Authority, introduced by Lisa, sorry, Haga?
Actually, Katrina Desmond from Miller Canfield. I work with Lisa Hagan.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
Thank you, welcome.
So I'm here acting as bond counsel for Beaumont Hospital, who wishes to issue bonds to refinance outstanding bonds. The purpose of the bond issue is to achieve interest rate savings, and the important part is that the bond issue will not affect the rating of the City of Troy. In fact, to the extent that it provides interest rate savings for Beaumont will make Beaumont stronger and also the City of Troy stronger. So unless you have any questions, I would just like to thank you for your time.
Any questions?
No.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to open the public hearing on this item. Any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Peters?
As you well know, I didn't like the way Beaumont pushed its way around up on 20 Mile Road up there and how it infringed in that park area, and I believe they're still in there. I just hope that they're gonna be held accountable if, in fact, they are given these bonds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Public hearing is closed. I'd like to bring this back to the council table for resolution. Counselman Pennington?
I'll move E3 forward as printed.
Forwarded by Counselman Pennington, seconded by Counselman Fleming. Campbell, excuse me, Counselman Campbell?
Thank you.
Whispered. Vote, or, yeah, vote, please.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Counselmember Hodrick?
Yes.
Counselmember Pennington?
Yes.
Counselmember Teetz?
Yes.
Counselmember Campbell?
Yes.
Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Next item is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And we have one person signed up to speak, Martin Howrlech.
Good evening. I am speaking as a resident this evening, and I just want to come up here and commend the mayor and the city council and the administration of our city and its back-to-basics approach. The reason why I come before you this evening is to discuss item I5. As you know, the city council is the governing body of our local government and has a fiduciary responsibility. You have exercised this responsibility fairly and judiciously in recent years. However, I am concerned by this specific proposal for no bid sales of publicly-owned land. While I have no objections to the sales of parcels A, C, D1, D2, and J by competitive bid, and I also have no objection to the sales process as delineated for parcel E, I do have a concern with not putting the other parcels out for bid. So let's review the parcels. Parcel B, as noted in the report to our city council, the Parks and Recreation Board recommended that Old Fire Station Number 2, the property, be retained and used for the purpose of a memorial for firefighters. This is an idea that is worthy of further exploration prior to selling this land, and the item should be removed from the list. Parcel F, this property is a natural addition to the property to the north. However, a developer may actually prefer to buy this property prior to purchasing the property to the north. Limiting the sales process to those who already own adjoining properties will potentially severely restrict the proceeds of the sale of this rare and valuable Big Beaver Road frontage. Parcel G, there is a smaller parcel across the street with a very nice house that was built in modern times. 268 Hickory Drive has a value of somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000. On a practical level, the city's remnant parcel across the street would be best valued as a buildable property. This may be an issue, there may be an issue here of setbacks, but the point is that the property across the street was built very nicely on a smaller lot, excuse me, on a smaller lot. Parcells H and I could reasonably be sold on their own, and they have neighboring properties that are of equivalent size. If the best development is via assemblage, then what is the harm in allowing the assemblage to occur after opening up these properties to bid? It may be that the best developers are not the neighbors, but rather people or entities who would purchase the property, excuse me, who would purchase the city property and one or more neighboring parcels thereafter. Following the process as outlined in the draft resolutions would prohibit the best efforts approach and would not be in the fiduciary interest of the city or its taxpayers. Thank you.
Any comments? Counsel? I think we'll be discussing that a little bit further down the line here, so. There are no postponed items, and there are no board and committee appointments, mayoral appointments, or nor, no council appointments or nominations. There is no request for closed session. Next item will be pure Troy mowing ordinance amendment, introduced by Paul Evans.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Henderson, members of council. In March, on March 3rd of this year, I presented some information to city council in regards to mowing maintenance. That information specifically talked about proposed amendments to Chapter 82 of the City Code, which is the property maintenance code. That's the code that regulates tall grass and weeds. In response to council's comments, we have prepared for tonight's packet the formal amended language for you to consider. And I'd just like to briefly summarize those amendments to Chapter 82 as proposed. What the language would do would reduce the maximum allowed height for turf, grass, and weeds, and would bring it down from a 10-inch maximum height to eight inches. It would continue to allow for preservation, restoration areas, and wetlands to not have to be cut to that eight-inch level. It would transfer responsibility for public advertisement notices and abatement costs of violations from the public works director to the planning director. It would add language that would more clearly allow the city or its agent, such as a contractor, to enter onto property to cut tall grass and weeds. And the final thing it would do would modify common area cutting responsibility language to more clearly indicate entities. Right now, that language talks about persons, but in the instance where an association property, a subdivision owns a property, a person doesn't own that. So those are the five things that the proposed language would do, and I'm here to answer any questions anybody might have.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item I5, disposal sale of remnant property, introduced by-
Mayor?
We need to take action on that here. Mayor?
All right.
Can't get good help.
That's fine. Mayor, I'll move the resolution I4, resolve that Troy City Council hereby amends Chapter 82 Property Maintenance Code as prepared by city administration, a copy of which is attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Second. Forwarded by Counselman Fleming, seconded by Counselman Pennington. Discussion? Vote, please.
Counselmember Hodrick?
Yes.
Counselmember Pennington?
Yes.
Counselmember Teetz?
Yes.
Counselmember Campbell?
Yes.
Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Now, disposal sale of remnant property by Mark Miller.
And Brenda Curran.
And Brenda.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of council. This evening, we are presenting 11 parcels and seeking authorization, authorization to sell them through two different processes. One is the closed bid, which is a normal process, and the other process is through remnant parcel policy, which council adopted in 2007. And so I want to take your attention, and we did hand out the pre- presentation, I want to take your attention initially to the chart. I just want to kind of go through the chart really quickly, because this will help try to organize our process this evening. What's important, on the left-hand column, we have attributed a letter- What's important, on the left-hand column, we have attributed a letter for each of the parcels, and those also correspond to the resolutions that are provided. And we, there are two different categories under development potential, buildable and assemblage. And what we have done is we've determined whether the properties are buildable on their own or whether or not they require assemblage to meet ordinance requirements. And the thought was is that those properties would then follow the remnant parcel policy, which was adopted in 2007. Obviously, it's your decision being city council which route you want to go, we're just presenting what, based upon the policy. With that, before I go through the pre-si, I would like to introduce Brenda Carter. She's an intern in our office. She has worked assembling the CATS, all the departments to try to get this together because there was a lot of information, a lot of different departments. We had to get together to try to understand why we have these properties, what conditions are our set, because we actually have another phase coming, which are, tend to be larger parcels, but they have much more difficulties with them. They're undeveloped parkland, which we're approached with bond money and things of that nature, which are going to be much more difficult to deal with and many more steps. So with it, I'm going to have Brenda just to have some short comments.
Yes, good evening, council. In 2008, the city of Troy experienced a significant decline in revenue due to the recession. Administration formed a committee comprised of key stakeholders. The purpose of the committee was to address remnant properties as a potential source of revenue. Of these remnants, 11 properties, as Mark said, was identified with one acre or less, buildable or needing assemblage. These properties were vetted to determine whether or not there were any legal or administrative encumbrances. The committee is recommending the following remnant properties for your consideration. We'd like to thank the committee for their assistance in developing the following presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I'll let Mark handle it for you.
Okay, we're going to start going through each of the properties. Obviously, this is a map of the city, and we have identified all of the parcels with the corresponding letters, as we indicated earlier. So the first property, property A, is .95 acres, and it is at South and Donaldson. It does have some easements on the property. That's a major water line, Detroit Water and Sewer, 84-inch, and then there's a 12-inch water main also. I would like to also note that to the north, there is a right-of-way, a paper street, which is kind of strange, but prior to the early '60s, you could plat property without doing the improvement, so it's not that unusual. This was a tax reversion, that's how we acquired it. It is buildable, it's zoned R1B, single-family residential, and it is developable. And so we're proposing that this would be a closed bid situation. I guess I'll take questions on each of these as we go because, if there are any.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you, buddy. Just a minute, going back to 2007.
Yes.
We, I remember we were discussing this, and we, council had some guideline changes and so forth as to what you had to get bids on, what you didn't. As I recall, if it was over $10,000 appraised value, we had to get bids, is that correct?
I believe that's a charter requirement.
Charter requirement, if you know. We did that, okay. This is the largest parcel that we have here. Question I have, what's the elevation? You've got major water lines running through there, is this part of the higher elevation in Troy?
Well, generally, the northerly part has a higher elevation than the southeasterly area. So off the top of my head, I would say, my experience is that it's going to be higher, but the highest points are on the northwest corner.
Questions? Questions on this parcel? My understanding is we're going to have all, appraisals on all of these, so as we move forward, we'll have a pretty good idea what these are.
That is correct. All of these, in each resolution, there is a requirement that we obtain an appraisal for each one, and the estimated cost is $15,000 for all of those. Move on to the next one?
Yep, sure.
The next one, parcel B, which is .34 acres in size. It is at Livernoy and Cutting, and this is the old fire station two location. It is zoned office. This probably would be better as a residential type of development in this, the Parks Board did look at all of these properties in this one. They felt that there should be a firefighter two memorial on this location. Management has looked at that. We do have a firefighters' memorial park, and there is a memorial there. We also talked to the fire department administration, and they did not feel a need for another memorial.
Any questions? Councilman Pennington?
Mark, can you explain assemblage, just for the public?
Assemblage means that the property is too small to meet the zoning ordinance requirement, or it's practically too small, and in the professional experience, we recommend that it be assembled with neighboring properties to make a better development.
Councilman Teetz?
So it's my understanding for this property and the others that are the assemblage properties that the person that, the people that are eligible to buy it are the folks that have neighboring properties or, pardon me, own the neighboring properties or have a controlling interest, like a sales agreement or something like that, to buy those properties? Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. The policy means that we would go to neighboring property owners-
Right.
-or people who have an interest, and then they would have to have a minimum bid that it would exceed at least the appraisal. And that's what the policy allows for. You don't have to, if you so desire, you, council, don't, could elect not to follow that policy.
Next.
Parcel B. Parcel B is a .56 acres, it's on Crooks Road. Oh, parcel C, I apologize. It's .56 acres in size, it's on Crooks Road. This was the most recent old engineering office. It's just south of Bullon Park. It is a registered historic, city historic district, so it does have some of those rules that guide its use. It was purchased with transportation dollars, and it is zoned community facilities at this time, but it could be used as a home also. So this, this property, we are looking at sealed bid process because it's, it's, doesn't need to be assembled to be used.
Any questions?
Parcel D, there are two properties, D1 and D2. They are each .42 acres in size. They are buildable. They're at Paragon and Livernoy, and they're zoned, single-family residential. So this would be a sealed bid process.
Any questions?
Parcel E, this is very small, .18 acre, acres. It is on West Big Beaver in Livernoy, on the southwest corner. It would require assemblage to be developed. It was purchased with transportation dollars and it's zoned Big Beaver District. So in our chart, we were recommending that this be, utilize the, the remnant parcel policy because it requires assembly, or assemblage.
Any questions? Next item?
Parcel F, this is on the north side of Big Beaver, at Frankton, just east of where we're at right now. As I said, it's .21 acres. It was purchased with transportation dollars. It requires assemblage to be developed in its own Big Beaver District.
Questions on this?
And this was a remnant parcel policy recommendation.
Next one?
Next slide is parcel G, .17 acres in size, at Plum and Hickory. It is a tax reversion property. It requires assembly to be developed to meet current zoning ordinance requirements, and it's zoned R1E, and is recommended for remnant parcel policy.
Questions on that one? Next one?
Parcel H, again, another small one, .14 acres in size, is on East Maple, sort of at the foot of Westwood, and it is about a quarter mile or less west of Rochester Road. It was purchased with transportation dollars. It is not buildable and requires assemblage, and it is zoned IB, that's the old industrial district, which with expanded uses.
Questions on that one?
Parcel I, .39 acres in size. It is on East Maple and John R. It was purchased with transportation dollars. It is not buildable in the community business district in which it is located, and it is then recommended for sale through the remnant parcel policy.
No questions?
I believe this is the last one. Parcel J, .31 acres in size, is on Big Beaver on the north side, near Waterfall, which is west of Dequinder, and it is a buildable, one, single-family residential site, and it was purchased with transportation dollars. And when I mention it with transportation dollars, there's rules that the fund, the revenue that's generated has to go back to transportation road activity, and we did include that all the proceeds would go towards roads, including the, like, tax-reverted properties. So that includes all of the parcels, and there are corresponding resolutions for each one in your packet.
Any questions for Mark before?
I guess I, I'm sorry.
Councilman Teetz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Saw the wheels turning.
Yeah, it's, have we, when was the last time the parcel, the procedure, or whatever the term is that we keep on referring to, been reviewed? Is that something that is reviewed often? I guess 2007 was long before I was on city council, and I'm just wondering, is there a, I guess I'm throwing this to the city manager, is that something that, is something that changes over time, or is it pretty much, this is the way it's been?
So obviously, I wasn't here at that time either, and it's a policy that Mr. Miller had looked at and saw that we would have to abide by, at least as a presentation to you, but I think it's an appropriate question for the city attorney to address and see if you would use the policy or not use the policy, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the requirement from the charter is anytime that it's valued over $10,000 a property, then it does have to be bid, sealed bid process. However, there is an exception, and that exception is if council determines that it's in the best interest to waive the sealed bid process. And so the remnant parcel policy of 2007 is what council at that time deemed to be a policy of the best public interest. In other words, you'd probably get the best value by offering it to the neighbors. It is in no way a guarantee that the neighbors will get the property. Certainly, the minimum amount would have to be set by an appraised value. So if it's much less than the appraised value, certainly council holds the key to that, and you would not have to sell any properties unless it is in the best interest to sell those properties. Council can decide that they want to follow that policy. However, if council wants to revisit it, that's an option that you have as well. If council wants to see all of them done by sealed bids, that's certainly an option as well. There's some hesitation with the non-buildable, certainly would have to be disclosed that they are non-buildable, because you don't want somebody bidding on it and then thinking that there's a guarantee that they'd get variances or that they would somehow be able to develop that property.
In a sealed bid process, in, let's say we do an appraisal on all these properties, in a sealed bid process, if a bid comes in lower than the appraised value, are we obligated to take that?
No, you are not obligated to accept any bids. This is just basically putting it out there and seeing if there are any acceptable bids to get rid of the property, but you still hold the ability to keep that property.
Any questions? Councilman Fleming?
Mark, you put a lot of work into this, and Ms. Carter's put a lot of work into this, and I thank you, but this has been given to council, we had since Friday to look at this. I have some questions and would like to spend a little more time with maybe yourself, Mr. Miller, and, you know, city manager, Mr. Kishnik, as well. And I think we may go exactly what you're recommending, but at this point, I don't have a comfort level with it. I would like to move that we postpone this until the, to the next meeting. We may just accept it then, but looking at a couple of these properties, I just don't have a comfort level with it now, and I think I could get a few questions answered and would be better prepared at the next meeting to make a move on this, but I'd like to move to postpone it, or take no action, we don't have to even vote on it if the rest of the council agrees.
Yeah, I think that's a good, good plan.
I agree with that.
Get another set of eyes on it, too, when the mayor's back.
Mayor, if there's a second for the motion to postpone, that would take precedence over-
I'll second that.
Second, okay. Forwarded by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Pennington. Ms. Pittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good idea.
Do we have to act on these individually, then, or just-
No, Mayor, because it's postponed, it'll all appear at the next agenda, on the next agenda.
Item I6, the 2014 Tri-Party Program Concrete Slab Replacement. We all want to hear about that, by Steve Vendett.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Henderson and city council. I am happy to be here to introduce item I6. This is the 2014 Tri-Party Program. This is the sixth year that we are recommending that tri-party funds be directed towards slab replacements on county roads, which this year have really taken a beating, as we all know. It's the second year that we are combining tri-party funds with other funds to make a larger project out of it. Last year, we replaced the Crooks I75 intersection, which was probably one of the worst, if not the worst, in the entire city. And we also did portions of Crooks between Waddles, I'm sorry, between Long Lake and Square Lake. That work was done by the city's contractor under the direction of the engineering department. This year, we are recommending joining the Road Commission for Oakland County to fix Big Beaver from Civic Center to Coolidge. The RCOC is using $291,000 that they received under the National Highway Performance Program. Plus, they required a $73,000 match for those federal funds, and combining that with the $300,000 tri-party funds and $145,000 that they are contributing, the RCOC is contributing for design, construction, engineering, and inspection, that amounts to an $809,000 slab replacement program that will cost the city of Troy $100,054. That is the city of Troy's match for the tri-party program, which is $300,000, and that's what it was last year. The RCOC plans to start work in July. It'll take a couple of months to complete, and by no way will it fix all of the slabs that need to be replaced. This is about $800,000 program, about $2.5 million is what's really needed to fix everything that needs fixing on, on Big Beaver Road. Approval of the cost participation agreement with Oakland County for the 2014 tri-party program is recommended, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Forward the resolution. Councilman Fleming?
This, this is a great program, and good job there. So, I'll move the resolution I six as printed.
Second.
Forwarded by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Hoderick. Discussion?
Mayor Protem? Just really good work bringing that together. I know you guys are trying to be as creative as you can. I think for the public's benefit, we get emails, and I have people grab me in Kroger or at church, anywhere I am, talking about our roads, our potholes. I'd just like to say for the record, we know. We drive them to everyone, the city staff, council. It's very important to us, and we'll be working it through to keep coming up with ideas and plans to tackle it as best we can. It's on our radar, and the public should feel assured that that's the case.
Anyone else? Ms. Pittner? Vote?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
And item I, motion passes. I seven, contract ratification introduced by Jeanette Minnick.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to introduce this item because we've reached a tentative agreement with the Troy commands, the Troy Communications Supervisors Association, the TCSA. The features of this agreement are consistent with the agreements that we have implemented with our other bargaining units recently, and city management wholeheartedly supports and recommends ratification of this agreement. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions? Thank you. Forward that resolution?
Sure, I'll move it forward. I'd like to move I seven, contract ratification resolved at a collective bargaining agreement between the city Troy and TCSA for the period of July first, two thousand and thirteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, is hereby ratified by the city council, the city Troy, and the mayor, and the city clerk, and are authorized to execute the final agreement.
Second.
Forwarded by Councilman Pennington, seconded by Councilman Campbell, Campbell. Discussion? Vote?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. I know that was a lot of hard work, so thank you. We moved to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to move or remove anything for discussion? Forward the motion? Forward the resolution? Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Forwarded by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Hoderick. Discussion? Vote?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. I just clicked on the wrong item here. Public comment or K one?
K one.
K one, announce, announcement of public hearings or none. K two, memorandums, Troy City Code, chapter twenty-six, Parks General Regulations.
Mayor, would you like me to just briefly describe what-
Describe it, yeah.
This is a proposed ordinance amendment, and it is to chapter twenty-six, parks and wrecks and the parks ordinance, and there are two components of that. One is a fireworks component, and the second one is to allow the addition of wine in the, in the pavilion areas. But because it is an ordinance amendment and because it's a substantive change, we give it to you as kind of a first reading so that you can ask any questions. If you have no questions, then it'll come back in essentially the same form that it's in now, and we'll be asking you at the next meeting to, to vote on the proposed ordinance.
Are there any questions? Item L, public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And we have one, one person signed up to speak, Richard Peters.
Evening, council. Mayor Protem. As we all know on the news lately, Ukraine's been in there. What I'm struck a little bit, what bothers me is the kind of hysteria that's kind of being generated by this stuff. And I wasn't aware of in the past where the CIA has been involved in foreign governments, we all know, you know. And I was just wondering if the Congress would maybe take a look into that, just to, I'm not saying that any, but just to take a look. Because when I see all this stuff hap, you know, I just would hope that maybe, you know, it might ease the mind of a lot of folks right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council referrals. There are no council referrals advanced. Council comments. No council comments advanced. Comments on items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. Does not look like anybody signed up for that. No study items, no closed sessions. That it? Meeting is adjourned.